Oh, the July 17th, Nashua Board of Education meeting to order. It is 7:02 and we are at the Nashua High North Lecture Hall. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Raymond is not with us tonight. Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Hohensie?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Porter?
Here.
We have a quorum. Other attendees, Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney, Mr. Donovan, and Ms. O'Gara. Mr. Mosher is joining us from phone, from the phone as he recuperates. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir.
I'm by myself.
Thank you, sir. We have a quorum.
Okay. Mr. Guarino will read the prayer and could Dr. Mosley lead us in the pledge?
Please stand. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us all to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Kaufman?
Mrs. Oden, I have a question, a point of order. I noticed the schedule that we received has a date. Is this considered part of the consent agenda? We do receive it via email. I'm not certain myself to know if I can ask about it.
I don't think it is.
Well, can I just address one?
The consent agenda is all the items that are listed above.
Which we do not get a hard copy of and I don't have my computer to look up what was sent on that list. But I'm just referring to the actual schedule the board receives.
No, that's not part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
She doesn't understand communications.
It's communications to the board, even if it's from the administration. Is that not part of the consent agenda?
It's a calendar that we use. Communication is usually something sent out.
Well, I actually, I would like to make a request that a particular time, if not a date, be changed for a particular meeting that's been placed on our schedule.
So, do you have something to remove from the consent agenda?
I'm asking to discuss this date as it relates, its communications to the board. It is sent in an email. I don't have the list that was sent to us, but it is the schedule that was sent to the board. So it is part of the public record. We received this Friday, so it would have been received prior. I received the schedule Friday, so it would have been part of the content to the packet that would have been sent to the board, actually, right? This calendar is part of the packet or a link to it is part of the packet, which I believe would be considered part of the consent agenda.
I don't believe it is.
Okay.
Okay.
So, at what point in time can we discuss the date and time of a particular meeting?
I think you could bring it up under new business.
Thank you.
So, is there anything to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
No moves.
Second. Roll call?
Okay.
Point of order? Ms. Hohensie?
Madam President, I'd like to know if you plan on stopping this roll call vote in the middle if the vote goes in the wrong direction and then stand up with a clerk to leave the room for the purpose of eliminating the quorum as you recently have done.
Excuse me? Could you say that again, please?
I would like to know if you plan on stopping this roll call in the middle of
the vote if the vote goes in the wrong direction and then stand up with a clerk to leave the room for the purpose of eliminating the quorum as you recently have done.
And when did I do that, Ms. Hohensie?
This is a procedural matter and it happened in non-public.
Why are you talking about things that happened in non-public? You specifically have been told multiple times that what happens in non-public does not come out of non-public.
It's procedure and state law, so I can talk about procedure.
Well, I am not going anywhere.
Thank you.
On the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Was there a second?
Yes, there was.
Timmons?
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
We have eight yeses, zero noes. The motion carries.
Is there any communication outside the consent agenda? We are now at our public question comment period, which is limited to things on the agenda for tonight. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
Yes. You sit right down, sir. Can you come up to the microphone here? Oh, sure.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All we need is your name and address.
My name is John Richard. I live at 107 Flint Lock Drive.
Turn the mic on, please.
My name is John Richard. I live at 107 Flint Lock Drive in Nashua, New Hampshire. The reason why I'm here is I sent out an email to the Board of Education that had to do with cursive writing. And I thought a little bit of humor could bring a debate and some, so maybe some much needed change to the, what's going on in the classroom. And I got four responses back, you know? And they were very, very sincere. They were good. And it made me want to come here. But it was one in particular that made me come here tonight. And just like I said, I was working all day. And I got this from one of the board members. And it says to my response, it said, "Mr. Richard, just to clarify, we teach cursive in the third grade in all 12 elementary schools. Have a nice day. Heather." That there made me come here. So all I want to do tonight is just read a quick little letter. I'll give you all a copy. I'll send you a formal letter with my name and address on it, an email as soon as I get home. And I just want to read this one statement and move on. Being able to read and write in cursive is just a good life skill to have, especially when it comes to actually signing your name on a mortgage card, put on credit card, legal documents, healthcare forms, government documents, and the list goes on and on. That being said, one needs to be able to sign their name and not just print it, or worse, having to make your mark, mock, in front of witnesses like they did many years ago before the advent of public schools across the country. Those schools taught cursive as a basic skill until recently. I was shocked to find out that so many kids can't sign their name or read or write in cursive. Thank God my wife, who did teach my child this important skill set, more to learn. As she grows older, the need for her to actually read or sign her name in cursive will arise without the need of her feeling intellectually inferior. I'm sure all of you have heard the arguments about our historical records being written in cursive and our kids not having the ability to read them for themselves. But what you don't hear very often are letters from other things like grandparents, other family members, recipes, letters from World War II, the backs of old photographs, and so many other things like that. I, as a person, liked the idea of being able to read and judge for myself documents. I read, no, sorry. Judge for myself documents I read rather than having it told to me by another person's interpretation of what it says. In closing, I feel the school system is doing our kids a disservice by not having this part of the core curriculum. I truly hope the board president, Mrs. Oden, and the curriculum committee under Mrs., I'm going to butcher your name, Vaughn Trevor?
Quite right.
Sorry. I truly hope the board president, yeah, that's how I started. To start the process, I want you guys to commit to starting the process of cursive writing being put back into the program by keeping this as an open action item going forward. Thank you. And a postscript. Writing in cursive is faster than typing or printing. It is also supported and recommended for people with dyslexia to help ensure that no kid is left behind. It's also a proven fact that people learn better when they write notes. And the articles below from Harvard University, the International Dyslexic Association, and the New York Times are a few examples of my statements. And I included three links that when you get my email tonight, you can click on it and look for yourself. And that's all I really have to say. I was really shocked with my child. I had no idea. I do keep track of what's going on in the city. I don't look at the paper every single day. I don't do a lot of things like that. But I never heard of this not coming about. And there is one other thing. The encouraging words from Heather. I talked to a third grade teacher today, and this is what she told me. There's a program that this, cursive is taught twice a week for 40 to 60 minutes, two days a week, for about three quarters of the year. So I did a quick little math. It works out being less than 35 hours for this life event that you're going to learn for the rest of your life. I think that's pretty sad. When you took, when I sent that joke out to you, it was, you started in the second grade with a pencil and an eraser and a special paper to keep you writing in the right direction. When you graduated the fourth grade, you got your pen because they assumed you could actually do it without having all these errors. So I think 25 hours in the third grade is kind of sad. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Anybody else like to speak? Superintendent's comments.
Thank you. I will be brief. I was, just for the public that they're aware, I've been away at, last couple weeks, I was away at a New Hampshire superintendent's conference and then I was on vacation. So my commentary is light and as the summer progresses, I'll have more to say. Couple things that are happening is that we are in our summer programs right now, which is, you know, kind of coming full circle. We end school and then we start our summer school. So if the, BOE hasn't looked at their emails already, we sent out an email inviting all board members to come to a power school, power scholar program that's taking place in currently right now, our partnership with the YMCA. We have that scheduled for July 26th for any board member to come to our facilities, to tour, to see the kids in their summer programming. I'm also going to send some pictures of our kids and some videos that are currently going on to the board so that, just to keep you aware of what's going on with our partnership with the YMCA and the program that we presented to you in the spring. What I've seen so far, and I'm excited that, you know, the kids are doing their academics and engaging in their academics, but they're also too, taking some time and learning some life skills. And yes, they're cooling down and then doing some swimming outside, so that's great. Our blast-off programs for our elementary schools are also taking place. And, you know, our kids are getting the support they need during the summertime to prevent any of that regression that sometimes takes place for some of our kids. I believe Madam Oden made reference to our summer school graduation that's going to take place on July 31st for our kids. So I encourage all of board members and to the public, if you wanted to attend that, it's open. And we're excited for those kids who stuck with it and didn't give up and now are going to be receiving their high school diplomas. Couple things for the superintendent's conference that I attended. There were some workshops on socio-emotional growth for our kids. That seems to be the commentary and the most popular topic that's out there. One of the presenters, excuse me, she used trauma competent and describing how kids, when they go through trauma, how that impacts their lives in and outside of the classroom. We also talked about, I know there was, Mr. Kaufman talked a little bit about cell phones and proposed a question around that to one of our candidates. And we did, for one presenter, talked about how do we integrate technology where it's effective and not distracting our kids in the classroom? It's always an interesting odyssey in a sense that there's always that balance of trying to engage kids on their own device while keeping them focused and not distracted on other things. I thought the conference was informative, very nice facilities, nice to see our colleagues, both, you know, assistant superintendents and superintendents in New Hampshire. I will have more to report out at the next board meeting, but these two weeks have been restful, but also we're getting back in the swing of things and getting ready for, I don't want to say back to school, it's maybe a little too early. I said I was driving, I was driving to school, to the office today, and I heard one Staples commercial that said, I don't have any stock in Staples, so I'm just sharing with you the public what I heard. It said, "Back to school sale going on at Staples." And I said, there's always this little bit of a, you can't really say back to school on July 16th. You've got to wait until like August before you actually say those things. But anyways, before we know it, we will welcome our kids back in the hot weather that we have been, and don't complain, we've been looking for this for a long time because it's been so hot. We'll be gone and we'll be back looking at the snow shovels and I don't want to say the S-word, S-D-word, the snow days, but it's coming.
Okay. Thank you. Board response to the superintendent's comments, and please limit your comments to issues that the superintendent brought up in his comments. I'll start over here, Ms. Van Twyver. Ms. Hohensie? Mr. Kaufman?
My question for Dr. Mosley has to do with the security training. And I'm puzzled why the board was not invited to the security training as you had promised.
Excuse me, I don't think that was addressed in his comments.
Mrs. Oden?
You can say that.
Point of order?
I'm sorry.
Because Dr. Mosley was not here, the meeting, that Monday after the training, so it was unaddressed.
Mr. Kaufman, you're out of order. Sorry. You can ask that later.
When? Madam Chairman?
Under new business.
Thank you.
We do not, oh, I got to finish superintendent's comments. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say enjoy the summer while we can. And I'll be looking forward to, hopefully I can check out some of these summer programs and the graduation. Thank you.
You should have, just for the, just so everyone knows, all the board should have received an invitation in your email from Tari. If you haven't received it, please let me know and I will personally resend it to you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Porter?
No comment.
Okay. Ms. Timmons has no comment. Okay. Moving on. Our student members are at St. Paul's for the summer, so good for them. Committee on the Budget. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Our work is pretty much done on the budget for this year. I would like to request that the administration actively recruit students to expand the Brentwood program to, with the ultimate goal of increasing the breadth of that program and also to increase inbound tuition revenue. We have capacity, something we spoke about, Mr. Donovan, you might recall, you said the administration could be proactive, get the students before you expand the program. And I just want to be clear that I'm making a formal request that that actually take place. And I'll make it a motion. Move to request that the administration pursue actively enrolling students into the Brentwood program.
Anybody want to speak to that?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just what is actively recruiting, just defining that. Our Brentwood program is for our students that have social-emotional challenges. It's all about fit. It's all about making sure that their, their learning plans, whether it's a 504 plan or an IEP, is conducive to the program. So we would certainly, by all means, advertise it to our surrounding school districts, if that's where you're referring to. But we also want to be very clear that we're not looking to just place kids in a program. We're looking to place kids according to their needs. So I just want to be very clear. The other thing too, is that when, anytime we have programs like that, like the Brentwood program or any type of relocation, we want to make sure that we grow the program in a way that, that works with our staff, that works with our current kids, but also our current location as well. So I'd be happy to, Marsha Bagley along with Chris Breenes, to advertise our program to other districts if they shall choose. But I also want to be sensitive that it's not, it's not a, it's not like a grocery store or anything like that. It's a program that services our kids according to their needs. And I just want to be sensitive to what the purpose of the program is.
Ms. Oden, may I respond?
Mr. Kaufman?
I think, Dr. Mosley, you understand my intent. So it's not, we have students that are appropriately placed in that program based on, as you suggest, IEPs, 504s, whatever. And they are clearly well-suited by that program for their specific situation. So I am not suggesting it's a catch-all or anything. I'm saying students appropriately identified by their respective districts who are looking for an out-of-placement should be made aware of our program in Brentwood such that perhaps it meets that, their student needs, which helps, we could give our staff full-time because if I'm not mistaken, most of those people on that program are part-time. We, I believe there's capacity in the facility that we have. So I think we're on the same page. So yes, I'm not, yeah, it's educating the districts around us that we have capacity if they have students who fit the profile. And I hope the board profile is okay, not in a derogatory way.
Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I was just thinking that now that we have this new facility, we invest a lot of time and energy and money in it, that if we sent out an email or a link to a webpage that we're setting up with pictures of the facility and description, just so they know that we're not out of business because we left Merrimack and just to show that we're new and improved in our, in our facilities. So I just think that it would be beneficial for the surrounding districts to know what's available as they build their student body for the next coming year. And of course, that we'd work with the people running Brentwood to ramp up as they feel that they can accommodate the students. That goes without saying.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd just like to ask if we have ever done any promotion like this in the past for members of Brentwood? Mr. Donovan, do you know? Do we advertise?
I don't believe we've advertised, no.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to this issue. I have a couple questions, Mr. Donovan. I believe this space that we're leasing for the next three years is 8,000 square feet, somewhere around there?
8,600.
Okay. And what was the square footage in Merrimack at the Suresk building?
It was about 10,000.
And it had a gym?
It had a mini-gym, yes.
Okay. I guess for me, I would like to be careful. We didn't, we didn't form that school to educate other students from other districts. It was a need for our own students. And I know a lot of those people are part-time. I don't see money in the budget to make them full-time. So at this point, I would not like to, I'm not going to support this because I think it's a little early to look at the program and how it's operating. There's less space over there. The kids won't have the same movement without that mini-gym. Fortunately, we tried to get a space with that and we couldn't. But at this point, I would just like to ensure that we're providing the best educational setting for the students of Nashua. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. The reason why I brought this forward was based upon my visit to Brentwood. And what I was told at the time that the facility in Merrimack, the 10,000 roughly square feet that it is, at one time housed 60 students when Suresk ran that program and when Suresk ran that program as a destination for multiple school districts. So the school districts in the surrounding area know that Suresk existed, was a destination, and now Nashua has the opportunity to pick up some of that slack that were in a new building. So again, that particular facility supported 60 students in that 10,000 square feet. So I think it's short-sighted not to investigate options that could help pay for the Brentwood facility because that's over $300,000, if I recall, the total rent over the three years. So it wouldn't hurt. Because the average placement in those programs is about $60,000.
Ms. Van Twyver?
While we're talking about Brentwood, I'd just like to know if we're on track with the modifications so that we can open school at the right time.
They've just begun the process, the end of last week, beginning of this week. They're working on permits and things like that. So the process has begun.
Ms. Porter?
I understand the intent of your motion and I don't disagree, but I also understand what Dr. Mosley and Mrs. Oden are saying. So I think that it's something to keep in mind as we're going forward, but I wouldn't want to tie up administration to be obligated to do that because of a motion by the board. I think that based on Dr. Mosley's comments, he's open to that and we'll do it as appropriate as we go on. And I think this would be a good topic to revisit, but I don't think that it really needs motion at this point.
Could you read the motion, Mr. Guarino?
Roll call, please.
It has to be.
The motion is that the administration pursue actively enroll students in Brentwood.
The word was recruit, not enroll. Actively recruit.
Actively recruit, okay. Okay. Are you ready for the, for the vote, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
We have four noes and four yeses. The motion fails.
Committee on Finance and Operations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's me. The reason why I paused is because we, actually, our next meeting is tomorrow night at 6:30 here, so we have nothing, I don't think we have anything on the agenda, so until tomorrow.
Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Ms. Van Twyver?
Due to scheduling conflict, there will be no curriculum meeting this month.
Committee on Human Resources. Ms. Timmons?
Yes. I move to suspend the rules as the Human Resources Committee met today at 5:35. I'd like to recommend that we...
Excuse me, we'll have to vote on that first.
Okay.
Okay. To suspend the rules.
Right.
I second.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Ms. Timmons?
I'd like to make the approval of the personal recommendation for the nomination of Jason Longent, Assistant Principal at Nashua High North for the 2018-19 school year at an annual salary of $94,800.
Second. Okay. Do you have that? Do you have that?
Okay, on the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Also, I'd like to approve Michael Whitehead, Assistant Principal, Nashville High South, North, Nashville High School North for 2018-19 school year, at the annual salary of $85,500.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Also, I'd like to approve Michael McCutcheon, the co-CTE Director of Nashville High South for the 2018-19 school year, at the annual salary of $86,000.
Second.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Hohency.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that I am not going to support this. I, I like the teacher. I'm concerned about his eligibility. I did not, I know there is a letter of eligibility that was not given to the board. I feel that was remiss. He doesn't have the CTE experience to be a CTE Director. And, under an ALF4 certification, that would mean, at most, he would have an intern license for the next three years. I think we have hired two CTE Directors without experience in a row, and I don't think it sends a good message to our students. And, I know some of our teachers are complaining that why do they pay for their certification and PD, when other people can just get these higher positions without the proper certifications? And, I think we're going to lose teachers from our district, experienced teachers, because there's no reward for people who, with, with experience. It's not a reflection on the individual who applied. I think he's wonderful. I just think that you need to go through the right channels to become certified, and I don't think this would be a benefit to our district.
Are you ready for, okay.
Roll call should continue.
Are you ready for the vote, Madam President?
Ready for the vote.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
I said, yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay, we have two noes and six yeses. The motion carries.
Thank you. And, last but not least, a personnel recommendation revised July 16, 2018. I'd like to recommend approval of that, in its entirety.
Second.
Ready for the vote, Madam President?
Roll call.
Mr. Mosher?
I said, yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Liaison Reports.
I don't think there was a meeting this month for liaison.
Are, are you thinking of student?
I'm thinking of, we did not have a meeting, because the students are away at St. Paul's.
But, but council.
Yeah, we have Ed Council once a month.
No, liaison, if you go to something to visit. Mr. Kaufman, did you have a liaison?
No, I have a, no, Mrs. Oden, I have a question, more of a point of order. Should not the strategic plan be discussed as a liaison report, since it's not a committee of the board? I know it's under new business, but doesn't it properly treat it as a liaison?
No.
In that regard, it would always be on the agenda, rather than having to make a request to get a report?
No, we don't need any liaison reports, because that's not what it is. Okay, unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Okay. We're under new business. Strategic Planning Meeting Report, 6:19.
May I speak to my request?
Yes.
Thank you. So, the reason why I asked that this be placed on tonight's agenda is that we, at our last meeting, I don't believe Dr. Mosley was here to speak to it, and Ms. Porter did not have her notes. So, I asked that we get a meeting report, and I do note that in our packets, Dr. Mosley issued a memorandum, which I hope we can discuss tonight. I have several questions I'd like to discuss about it. I don't know, Mrs. Oden, how do you like to proceed? Can I ask my questions? We did receive a written report.
I would like to give Dr. Mosley an opportunity to address his report first. Thank you. Is that okay with you, Dr. Mosley?
That works well for me. I'd love to do so.
Thank you.
Couple of things. First of all, this was, if, probably about maybe three or four months ago, that this ma, meeting, or this update was planned for the board. In your packet that I passed out, probably, I'd say about three months ago, it was incumbent on the, on myself and the other board member, in this case, Susan Porter, to come back to the general board to give an update. And, that's exactly what we had planned to do. So, just to give you a sense, that we have reached out to what we would consider our steering committee. We're still in the process of, of contacting those individuals who might have an interest in participating in the steering committee for the strategic plan. We have not heard back from all of the people we contacted, and that's nothing negative. It's just that when we sent out the correspondence, we were up against the Fourth of July break. It was the end of school, and so, we're still hearing, hearing back from those individuals. Once we hear back from all of the individuals we sent back, oh, I'm sorry, they sent back the confirmation that they will participate in the steering committee, we will publish and give that to the board. It's just not complete yet. So, in the packet, what I had supplied the board was, and I just want to say this 150 times, it's a draft, a draft. And, what I mean by a draft, a draft is always organic. It's an opportunity for us to speak to the, what the drafting process, what we're thinking about, how this process is unfolding, some of the challenges that, that we are presented when we talk about strategic planning. You want me, you want me to keep going? So, one of the things that, that, that I think it's important is that we wanted to get our, our, you know, our leadership team, just a sense of what does it feel like district-wide when we embark on the strategic plan, when we start to focus, when we, when we gather together, and we look at these focus groups? Focus groups are from everyone in the community. That means administrators, teachers, parents, aldermen, anyone that you can possibly think of. We are going to come and talk to you and get your feedback. What's that process feel like? And, the process that we have outlined, it's very, very simple. It's called SWOT. It's spelled S-W-O-T. And, what that acronym really stands for is Strengths, Weakness, Opportunities, Opportunities, and Threats. I don't like to use the word threats, so I like to parenthesize the threats with, I would say, challenges, because there's no threat to an idea. It's just a challenge that you perceive in the district. And, so, what, what I did in a very basic way is just kind of give all of our department heads, the people, central office administrators, Garth, they have already experienced this, just what I would call a flavor of what going through the SWOT analysis activity felt and looked like. So, that second page that you see is just some general information on what that looks like, and what the responses were from the participants. What I would like to preface and say, that there's no right or wrong answers. There's nothing here that, that is a high priority or not. But, in a sense that, if you can just take these two pieces of paper, about four pages, one, two, three, three pieces of paper, in understanding that we are going to embark on this data collection from the qualitative perspective of this SWOT. The other thing that's going to take place for our strategic plan at the beginning of the year is that we're going to generate some questionnaires to get more feedback from our stakeholders. But, for the purpose of this meeting, we just want to give you a sense of what that SWOT analysis looks like and feels like. Some of you see on this piece of paper here, just kind of the stickies that we use to just what I call brainstorm, brainstorm, the strengths that we see in the district. And, these strengths are really germane according to your department. Sometimes, when you're working in the HR, you see strengths very differently than, let's say, the business department, or very differently than the assistant superintendent's departments. So, we started that dialogue. Finally, and I want to, I would love to take credit for everything that happens here, but I'd like to just give credit to Sue, just identifying it. But, I think Stacy did a really good job with kind of capturing what this organizational piece looks like. Again, it's a draft. It's a draft. And, so, what we are at right now, you see, you know, Dr. Mosley, where are you in this process? How, like, where are you in terms of the strategic plan? What are some of the expectations that we have? And, right now, we are just in the planning phase. Planning phase in terms of setting calendars for people. Planning phase in terms of hearing back from our constituents, in terms of the, the steering committee. Planning phase is in terms of the focus group. In, I don't, in August, we are really planning on having a, a nice kickoff to our strategic plan. Again, the board, everyone will be invited to that kickoff plan, in terms of the announcement, in terms of where we are, in terms of the planning process. We introduce individuals who have volunteered their time to be part of the steering committee. And, that steering committee is so diverse in terms of, in terms of stakeholders, business people, former alumni, students. I mean, we really tried to get as much as we could in terms of different demographics and socio-economics to be part of the strategic plan. The one thing that I, so, just looking at this piece of paper here, this is our organic draft of, conceptually, where we're at in terms of the planning phase for our strategic plan. We're going to engage in the data gathering phase of the plan, analysis, drafting goals. Once we get all of that data and anal, we get the data, you analyze that data, both qualitative, quantitatively, then you move to drafting and prioritizing what that data speaks to. So, part of the data that you really have to look at is what we call triangulation of the data. What that simply means is that you, we have to go through both the qualitative and the quantitative pieces to really identify the, what our stakeholders in the community want us as a district to focus on. Once we find that, what I would say, four tenets, then we move to drafting goals, strategies, objectives. And, then, we draft a plan. Part of that plan would be to make sure we share it with the steering committee, we share it with our district leadership team, and ultimately, ultimately, this plan is approved by the BOE. The final thing that I would just like to say, and that I'd be more than happy, I, if it's okay with Madam Chair, if I can just turn it over to Sue Porter. I, I took a stab at the mission statement in terms of just drafting something. The mission statement is right here. And, part of our old mission statement was probably about a page and a half. And, you don't want a mission statement to be a page and a half. You really want your mission statement to say, this is who we are, this is what we are. But, you don't want to say it in a way where it ends up feeling like you're reading a novel about who you are. You should be able to identify who you are less than three sentences. And, so, this is my attempt, and I say attempt, because this is actually kind of came to me, and the funny story is, I, I went down and I shared it with Stacy, and she said, "Mm-hmm." I said, "Well, what's wrong?" She said, "It's too long, Jamal." And, I said, "What do you mean?" She, then we, we kind of chuckled a little bit. And, where I'm going with this, and I share that story with you, because that's what this process is going to be like. It's going to be, you know, when this mission statement finally goes through what I call the filters of our focus groups, the filters of the board, the filters of our leadership team, this will probably look very, very different in about a year. And, so, we're also looking at our, our vision statement. And, I was just sitting with Sue, and I said, "I don't, I didn't know quite how to, how to formulate the, the vision statement." And, again, you don't want it to be more than three sentences, I said. But, the one thing I do want to include in it is the, the phrase of the whole child." And, we had a brief kind of interaction with that. So, this is underway. The goal is to keep the board abreast of all of the, the progress that we have, and also, too, some of the challenges, too. We really started to, the most difficult part of this process is actually scheduling. It's actually getting people's schedules coordinated, because you're, we're really talking about scheduling, in this case, thousands of individuals to come together on this. So, that's where we're at. I'd like to turn it over to Sue. If there's something I missed, or something that you'd like to add, certainly, that'd be okay.
Okay. All right. If, I'm going to start at the back and work forward. So, if you look at the, the draft of the, can I see this? Okay. Of the flow chart. I, I think that during once of the, one of the meetings, the earlier meetings, when I was talking with Dr. Mosley, I said, "I'm, I'm not really sure how all these pieces are fitting together." I think a flow chart, I know that a lot of people are visual learners, I am. I like to see it in multiple ways. So, this is a beginning attempt to kind of see how all the different stakeholders interact, and how we're going to proceed through this process. So, if you refer back to your strategic planning timeline, I know you might not have this with you right now, but the colors on here go with the colors on the, the flow chart. So, if you look at the first part, this blue part is Phase One Planning, which has the heading here, Phase One Planning. So, that's, you know, Dr. Mosley and I and Stacy Heims are kind of working on the nuts and bolts of just scheduling, and making sure that things are working. The Phase Two Data Gathering is that orangish color, and that's when we're going to be getting focus groups and data, and the survey will be helping us to kind of put together a direction. The third part, the yellow one, is Phase Three Analysis, and these are the different groups that are going to be involved in that phase. So, we'll have our steering committee, our leadership team, and of course, the Board of Ed. So, I, I think that hopefully, by looking at the way these different groups interact, you'll see how important the Board of Ed is in all of it, and that will be keeping you in the loop. And, hopefully, if at any time you have any suggestions, you'll, you'll be willing to share those. Phase Four, drafts, draft goals, strategies, and objectives, in the purple part, you can see how that's all fitting together and going into the final draft plan. And, at the, at the very end, it is up to the Board of Ed to approve this. This is nothing that any individual or group of people are working on alone. This is much too big a project to not be involving the entire community, the entire Board of Ed. And, I, I will say, I feel very comfortable with the way that it's going. It's a very comprehensive undertaking, and to be sure that everybody has a say, and that we are asking the right questions, that we're getting the right data, and that we're looking at that data in a correct way, I think that's what we, we all want. We all want the best for our district, and we want the most up-to-date and inclusive plan that we can get. And, I feel confident that so far, in the very beginning stages, that we're laying a foundation for that. I think it will, I think it will go well.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I'd like to thank Ms. Porter and Dr. Mosley for this plan. I know it's time-consuming, and we can't be nitpicking this right now, when it's in the early stages. I'm- I'd like to know how long it would take before we can really have some meat to this. I know right now it's premature, and to say anything other than all the work you've already done, it's really silly of me to even ask you if we need more than that.
So my response is, I think the most time-consuming part of this is going to be the data collection. It really is. Because we have to, we schedule the focus groups, but it's also the time it takes to go out there, to meet with people, to get that data, to then get it recorded. So, you know, this part here, even, you know, I'll just look at, you know, the strengths in this, kind of going through it quickly. Transportation routine, CTE program, opportunities, diversity, diversity of perspective and diverse. I just kind of read down here. The challenge is, is that we're probably going to get a stack this big. And so what we have to go through is to decide how many times, I'll just, I'll just use, it says, collaboration, collaboration of central office. How many times does that pop up? Or how many, how many themes does that pop up? Or patterns do we see around collaboration with central office throughout the district? And that's a strength, but that might pop up in a weakness, perhaps in, you know, 55% of the respondents or something like that. And if that is, then we start to really kind of see if that's also prevalent in our, in our surveys as well. So it's going to take, I can give you a better answer once we get the data collection completed.
I have one follow-up question. The stakeholders on this strategic plan cannot be so large that you're not able to get your job done. So do you have a general idea how many people that's in your, as stakeholders in this strategic plan?
I would say that we have quite a, the goal is to enter, to do the SWOT analysis with as many, I say stakeholders, and I include the board in that as well. So, you know, one of the things I was thinking about is that, I know the board has had like a work session, you've had a work session before, I know, Ms. Oden, you've scheduled that. I would love and welcome the opportunity to have a work session just with the board, just on the strategic plan. And then we can walk through that, that process. We're going to have some work sessions with our PTOs, we're going to have some work sessions, not work sessions, but we'll go through that strategic planning with our administrators, would love to go through it with other stakeholders. I would use like some, our alderman, or anyone that's willing to go through that process with us. So I don't, I guess the question is, we like to disguise, we don't want to say, we don't want to put any limitations on anything, but we also want to be realistic, too, that we don't want to be collect, I mean, you could be collecting data for the next two years. So we also, we want to make ourselves available to all of our schools, available to our parents, or we'll reach out to our PTOs, we're going to reach out to our administrators, our, specifically our, our stakeholders we have within, within the business community. We're going to have a planned session just for them to come and give us feedback. We'll also be working with our CTE directors to make sure that we can develop those partnerships and ask for those partnerships to give us some feedback on what they would like, the strengths, weaknesses and opportunities and challenges within our district. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Huge undertaking. Ms. Kaufman?
Thank you. Dr. Mosley, you referred to the report that you, well, essentially, your draft proposal, which the board ultimately approved, whenever that was, March or April. And one of the meetings on that was, in fact, the June 19th meeting. And I know that, I think it was Mrs. Hohensie who requested that that meeting be held in public, and it was not. And I would, and, you know, Ms. Raymond tried to assure us that the full intent is that these meetings will be held in public, et cetera. And I want to know why that meeting was not held in public since it was one of the meetings that was in the original proposal and the discussion at that time was, would be held in public. And then I do have another one or two questions.
It's by just standing through the legal counsel that, in fact, the meetings need to be posted. So any type of strategic planning meeting moving forward based on the legal counsel we receive will be posted. Even the meetings that don't need to be posted will be posted. We're not in any way trying to harbor any type of negativity or any type of secret information around the strategic plan. It is transparent in a way that everything that was covered in the meeting, in terms of feedback, that the leadership team, that I meet with my leadership team once a month, was a leadership team that I met with them and get that, that feedback from, but all of their comments and information that was shared at that meeting, you have a copy of, Mr. Kaufman.
Okay. Can you tell me who attended that meeting? Because we don't know. There's, no record has been made available to the board or the public.
I can certainly give that to you.
Who attended?
Well, I can, I can, the leadership team, at the top of my head, I can, assistant superintendents, you know, special education and human resource individuals and myself.
Point of order, can I just say for, for the time, because it's almost eight o'clock now, could we let the superintendent send a list of all the people that were involved? I wouldn't want him to forget somebody and then somebody say, well, you didn't send us the whole list.
That's fine, but Mrs. Oden, I did request that this be placed on the agenda. Dr. Mosley, Ms. Porter took quite a bit of time to give us an update. I have prepared questions because I asked for it, and I would like to get through them since it was my line item on the agenda to, to have this discussion. So...
Oh, well, I think other members sitting here have a right to ask questions if they have questions.
I haven't, the only question I've asked is who attended. And I think Dr. Mosley has helped to answer one of my questions, which is, the board will have a chance to do its own SWOT analysis. Because I, I didn't see that in the original plan, and the documents as provided today did not provide for that. It has us analyzing the data, but it doesn't have us as a focus group to answer it. And I look, and I'll just make my request right now, since we're on the topic, is on Thursday, September 13th, on our schedule, it says, this is the kickoff meeting, Strategic Plan Development kickoff, it's scheduled for 3:00 PM. I'm going to formally request that that meeting be held in the evening. That, I can't guarantee I'm going to be available during the day, but my evenings I've cleared for the board. And I don't want to miss that. And I know Mr. Guarino works out of state, there are other people who work on the board or have other commitments, and I just want to put it out there, this showed up for the first time on our current schedule, and I'm asking the first opportunity I get to have it, you can keep the day of the week, I don't care, but not in the afternoon. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I just want to know which of the follow-up meetings, because I told you ahead of time to post the July, the June 19th one, and that was never posted. But all the subsequent meetings on this list will be posted in public?
All of the meetings will be posted, correct, yes.
Okay, so the public is invited to go to all the subsequent meetings that are on this list that you handed us out on May 25th?
Public, you may attend, the public can go.
Yeah, I don't want to participate, just attend.
Right, okay. But it's for, I just want to be very clear that when I'm holding a focus group for, let's just say, the board, it's solely devoted for the board to give us feedback on strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges. Now, someone can observe that, that's fine, but someone to jump in as, you know, if Garth decides that he wants to give his commentary, when it's your time to be the focus group, I don't think that's appropriate for Garth to be doing that. I think each focus group is really germane and focused on a particular demographic, in this case, it would be the board, to get that feedback. So we want to, I want to make sure that we get the correct data for each of the focus groups. Am I making sense?
Fine, I'm not, I'm not debating who's participating.
Okay.
I'm just making sure for the public going forward that this is more transparent, fully transparent. That's all I want. And you assured me that it's all going to be posted, and everybody can attend, keep their mouths shut, but they can watch. That's perfect. That's what I want to know.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino, then Ms. Porter.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say to Dr. Mosley, job well done, and also Ms. Porter. Looking at all the information thus far, the planning process, it's comprehensive, cooperative and continuing, three Cs, planning. SWOT, the SWOT process is used over and over again at municipal master plans. Basically, it's, it's, it's a very straightforward process. Inventory of resources, what do we have, understanding the history regarding where the district has been, understanding the potential needs and the desires, and then visioning to develop goals and objectives to meet potential needs and desires for the future, where we want to be. So just to synthesize it, make it simple, and, and so I just want to say that it's looking over all this information, it, it's a very good job and a very good planning process.
Thank you. I just want to, go ahead. A little shout-out to Stacy for just, Stacy's been really helpful, like, basically putting me in a headlock and saying, get in here, Mosley, we got to finish, like, just really keeping us focused. And really, the planning piece has been just the scheduling of the dates and times. And to, you know, Mr. Kaufman's request about the three o'clock, I know that seems a little minor to move it back two hours. I will just say, I have to see what I can do. I can't make any promises because we already sent out the correspondence, and people, believe it or not, the people's schedules have been filling up like seven, like six months from now. So it's very difficult to give, to get busy people to agree on one day and time. So I'll see what I can do, but thank you.
I apologize for leaving Stacy.
No, it's my, no, she's not here, it's all good.
Okay, Ms. Porter?
Okay, so I did meet with Attorney Bolton, and he said that all of the meetings need to be published in two places. One of them will be this calendar that comes out, which also goes to the city calendar, so that it will be two places that they will be posted. These meetings have to be posted, but they, they don't have to be recorded. So, I mean, the board meetings obviously are televised. We do have to keep minutes, and the meeting, the minutes need to be available. They will be, as far as I know, collected and kept at Central Office for anyone who wants to see them. But I just want to be sure that we know that not all of these meetings have to be televised, as far as I understood from Attorney Bolton.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosher, do you have any, anything you want to add?
I think that so far, the, the meeting has very, been very interesting, and there's some very lofty ideas that have floated out. And I think that what we have to do is consider all of the things together and make sure that we have them in order in our mind, so that when we are making statements or we want to make statements, that we can make them, you know, for the public benefit, so that they are complete and concise. And when requests are made for different things, of either the administration or the, or the, the board president, that the, instead of trying to fit them in on top of or in between something else, that you say, well, okay, and submit them as a written request with a copy to the board president and to the administration, or to whoever's concerned. That way, it saves us a lot of time in listening, and it keeps us focused on what is at hand, which is the agenda that we are trying to get through. So outside of that, I think that it's been very productive tonight. It's been interesting listening to the ideas of Dr. Mosley and some of the comments by other members. But we have to keep in mind that we have to put together these ideas that we have and not try to bring them out and, and say that, well, everything has to be debated now. You can't do that. You have something in mind, put your thoughts in order and submit them so that they can be read by all the members, so that we can see where you are on a particular subject or a different part of a subject. And then when, when we can reconvene, that we can make educated comments and get positive results from the administration or from other members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Finkwever?
Am I to understand that Jackie Waters will not be transcribing minutes from these meetings? Or will she? You said they weren't going to be recorded. So that means that you have to have a secretary that takes the minutes?
I would assume so.
So they'll only be handwritten minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Can I just answer that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And according to Attorney Bolton, it doesn't need to be verbatim what's said. He gave some general rules. He said it should be a list of the people present, the public who speaks, a general description of the matters discussed, decisions made, that type of a general thing, just like minutes.
Correct.
Mr. Kaufman?
Motion to record and transcribe in a non-verbatim way the proceedings of all strategic planning committee events, meetings, et cetera.
Can I have a second?
A second, then.
I, I think I'm kind of a little confused. Didn't you just said that Attorney Bolton just said that you didn't have to do that? So why are we making a motion to do just what he said you didn't have to do? So I'm kind of confused there.
He'd like to speak to his motion.
The reason is transparency for the public. If people can't attend this meeting that occurs in three, at three o'clock in the afternoon, or at seven o'clock at night, at least the public who might care about our strategic planning process has an opportunity to observe the proceedings at a later time. It's just like everything we do. By the board not being directly involved in these meetings, the requirement to record them and produce a transcript, and it's not a verbatim transcript, but to include minute notes goes away. Mr. Bolton said it was not required, but there's nothing preventing the board from doing a little bit more to inform and keep informed the public. Half of the members, five members on our board are possibly going to leave at the end of 18 months. Our terms are up. So whatever knowledge that we collect during that process might be gone and unavailable later on. By recording, not only the board's participation, but also the discussion from all the stakeholders throughout the district, the content that goes into this planning process is therefore preserved and made available to the future. I think it's a, I think it's, I think it's contingent upon us to ensure that we share as much information with the public and we keep them as formed, as informed as possible. By moving forward, by recording these things, by having it in this room and having the board here, you know, the equipment piece of it is very easy and the city folks can schedule a resource. It's not required per Mr. Bolton, but I think it's good policy, I think it's a best practice. I think it ensures transparency and tells the public that we're doing the right thing.
Thank you, I think you've said that. Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I think that this motion is not necessary, it's redundant, because we are already required to keep meeting minutes, and those meeting minutes will be available to the public. So I, I think that it's just over the top, and it's, it's just, just more work that we're going to take up, more man-hours from administration, and that costs money. You know, we have to look at the impact that we have on administration. And so if we can get a form, we have these, these forms. So basically, you can have a typed form with, you know, just say, for, you know, with the, with the meeting, the meeting date and everything, and then you could have a form that you just fill out who's present, you know, and then, and then, and then have the salient points. So I think it's redundant, and it's probably not necessary, and it's just too much man-hours and taken, costing more money.
Okay, Ms. Porter.
I'm a little disturbed by the idea that if it's not recorded, it's not transparent, as if to imply that we're trying to hide something. I know that, that can't be what you mean. We have strategic planning updates regularly scheduled that will be to the Board of We have strategic planning updates regularly scheduled that will be to the Board of Education. And those meetings are recorded. So there will be ongoing updates recorded for the public. There will be minutes available. There's nothing clandestine happening at these meetings that anybody is trying to hide. At some point, you have to delegate. At some point, you have to trust the people who are in charge of this, that they're doing the right thing, that they don't have any ulterior motives in trying to. There's no, I mean, looking at this, I don't see how, even if you wanted to hide something, how you would. How would you do that? You've got a flow chart of how all the different groups are interacting. You have regularly scheduled updates. And at the very end, the board has to approve or not. So I, you know, at some point, we have to make the task manageable. And I think as it stands, it is manageable and nothing is hidden. It is transparent as stands.
Thank you, Ms. Owensie.
Thank you. I think the task of keeping minutes is arduous. If you're in a committee, it's a lot easier to participate if you're just in the moment and you're listening and you're participating. Whoever has this responsibility of being the secretary no longer can participate. So essentially, we're having to ask either a staff member or somebody to come in to take the minutes because otherwise I think we're unduly burdening a committee member. It's very easy to push a button and tape. Now, our last non-public meeting that I went to look at the minutes were so inaccurate that it gives me pause. If you're going to have a lengthy meeting, it's just easy to make mistakes. It's easy to get things backwards. Having a recording just makes it simpler. So somebody could start writing down afterwards what the minutes were, listen to the tape, and it's done. It's just more efficient, more effective, and it takes the onus.
Excuse me, I think you've made that point. Thank you.
Are we going to start timing, board members? Because I feel, fine, I'm done, but the vibe I'm getting is not good.
You had made that point. It is now eight fifteen. We're trying to get out of here at a decent time. We heard what you said. Thank you.
Got it.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Our standard procedure is to record our meetings. When I had my ad hoc committee, it was recorded and transcribed. That is our standard operating procedure. And I personally would like to have it recorded and transcribed. I'm sure that whomever you choose to be secretary might give good minutes, but might not either too. So we've set a precedent. That's the way we've done business all along, and I see no reason to change it, but.
Are you ready for the vote, Madam President?
Yes.
On the motion, I'm going to read this motion back because I'm not sure I got it completely. Says to record and transcribe in a non-verbative way strategic planning meetings. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
It's close enough.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Owensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
I have three yeses and five noes. The motion fails.
At this point, I'd like to move on to the second issue of new business. Attorney Bolton's email regarding Board of Ed email communication, RSA 91A by Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Part of what I also requested that that would be forwarded to the Policy Committee for a discussion with a subsequent policy relative to it. Mr. Bolton, and hopefully I summarize his words correctly, has said that the Board of Education members essentially cannot email to the entire group because that constitutes essentially a meeting. And I am still struggling with that in that if I'm requesting something be put on, I don't want to get into the detail now. Mr. Mosher earlier tonight said, "Members, write down your requests and send it." And he did imply that everybody would receive it, your ideas, so that they're collected for future discussion. If we followed Mr. Mosher's suggestion, it would be in violation of Attorney Bolton's, as I understand his instructions to the board. Therefore, I'm asking that this be referred to the Policy Committee for discussion and the creation of a policy. So we're very clear about what the board can and cannot do with email.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
I did not say to email anything. I said to pass it on to. And I meant that it would be hand-carried or postage or some other means of communication rather than emailing. You are assuming a lot, my friend, that when you say emailing.
How would I hand you anything, Mr. Mosher? I couldn't.
Excuse me, just a minute. Point of order. Wait until you're recognized, please, Mr. Mosher. Continue.
Yes.
Okay.
You could hand it to me very easily, the same way Mrs. Oden has handed me copies of documents. And I've had other copies of documents that have been brought to my door and handed to me. So there are other ways to do it besides cockamamie emails that we are not supposed to do.
Point of order, that's.
Excuse me, yeah, Mr. Mosher, could you refrain from words like that?
It's not a bad word. It means foolishness.
Is it in the dictionary? I'm going to check that out when I get home.
Please, let's just treat others respectfully.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Yeah, I was a little perplexed at this when I saw it in my packet. It says Bolton, Steve, to me, who is me? And what, I didn't understand what this was all referring to.
It's just something else. I think the handout is something else.
Unrelated. Is that something different than what we're talking about?
Yes.
This says.
I didn't think so.
This says, well, I don't know who to me is.
It was to me. I had written him about the Board of Ed, I believe.
It would have been nice if the two questions were included in that because I just, I don't even know what this is all about. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any? Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I feel uncomfortable going against Attorney Bolton. I really do. I feel that, and when you say not to email the whole board, we don't email the whole board. I never respond to anybody through the whole board. If I have something to say, I send you a private email. I will not email the whole board. I've been told over and over from day one not to do it. But everyone seemed, some board members seemed to get pleasure sending me stuff through the whole board, and I resent it because I was told not to do that. And I don't want to have an email from the entire board to me. Send it to me one-on-one, that's a different story.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Point of information. Mr. Attorney, the Mr. Bolton's a little strong on this. You can send administrative things to the board. And if it's about meeting, when you're going to meet or things like that, it's perfectly okay. He's a little strong on this, and I even talked to him about that. But I think he sent back a case that was supposedly very, I think it was down on the Cape somewhere, that was supposed to be costing the Board of Education or the district so much money, which had nothing to do with what we're doing. The right to know is that you can't discuss and make decisions. So, but it's nice not getting all those mails.
I'll speak to it. We had Attorney Klaassen tell us as a board, we should not be using that Board of Ed email address to email everybody. He said you might want to have a policy where you use it to set up meetings. Quite frankly, when I set up meetings, I asked Tara to do it. I think that's most appropriate. As you know, I don't respond to any of the emails that are sent to the Board of Ed. I think we've been told multiple times by two attorneys that that's inappropriate. So I think I won't support this going to policy because I think we already know what we're supposed to do.
Okay. Do you have the motion? There was no motion.
There was a motion.
No, I didn't hear any motion on the floor.
Part of what I said was to send it to policy. And Ms. Owensie seconded it.
I didn't hear anybody make a motion.
Did you say I'm?
No, I'm the clerk. And when someone says I move and there's a motion, what he said was he requested that it goes to policy. He did not say I move.
May I make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Klaassen.
Move to send to policy the issue concerning emails to the full board.
On the motion?
Can you reread the motion, please?
The motion was to send to policy the issues of email communication to the full board. Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Owensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Garino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
We have two yeses and six noes, so the motion fails.
Okay. The next item, concern regarding the frequent and unapproved changes to the board's previously approved meeting schedule. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So tonight is a good example. Tonight originally was scheduled to be a curriculum meeting. It was preempted by this board meeting, which was scheduled for the previous Monday. And there was an HR meeting scheduled for Wednesday, which those two meetings got moved to tonight and somehow kind of overwrote the curriculum meeting that was originally scheduled for tonight. These, our schedules are, the board in January approved the schedule for our meetings. We have that voted sitting out there. This board voted for a schedule. People make commitments based upon the schedule, like vacations and other things. I think we should be holding to our schedules that we have made. If you're going to change the schedule, then get a vote of the people who are supposed to attend that meeting and move it with agreement, not arbitrarily and oftentimes without any understanding or reason. So I'm just asking the board chair to run this responsibly and not just on the whim of whatever, never explain to us, change meeting times, dates, preempt other meetings, not reschedule preempted meetings. And I ask that you stop the practice.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yeah, I didn't understand why the curriculum meeting had to be overridden when I was told that Mr. Klaassen couldn't make last Monday night or something, and so that's why. But there was no reason why our regular meeting couldn't have gone on last Monday and then have the curriculum meeting tonight. And I do resent the fact that you go around the chairman, Madam President, and then put Tara in the position of negotiating these things. I don't think that she should have to have that responsibility. If you want to change a meeting, I think it's only polite to go to the chairman and ask if it's okay or if it's some way it could be changed. Now, you've done this to me twice, and I really don't appreciate it. You're taking away my responsibility, and I don't think that's, I mean, you want a piece in this district. Let's do it politely then.
I believe this is the first time. I think the last time, the last time you did have your meeting, I explained to you that I had no problem moving the other meeting. This one, I'm sorry, but it had to do with Attorney Klaassen being able to be here. It had to be at a board meeting, so.
I don't understand why it had to be at a board meeting. And number two, Mrs. Oden, you went around me the last time and asked Dr. McKinney if he would change the date. Now, I don't appreciate that.
Well, that's because I was told that he had asked for the meeting on that date. I'm sorry.
And the month before, Mrs. Oden, I said right here, please schedule to, ask the administration to schedule those two dates.
I will be careful at that, and I apologize if that happened. But it was not an intention. And when I was asked to change this meeting to tonight, I did not have my calendar in front of me. It wasn't intentional. And as I told you, I thought maybe you could ask for next week sometime to have a curriculum evaluation meeting. But I'll tell you, I've gone back over the last three years. And during the months of July and August, there has not been one curriculum evaluation meeting.
That was a choice of the chairman.
Okay. But sometimes things come up and you have to change a meeting. And I think that is a guideline that's happened before. And I think sometimes people have to be flexible. The next issue is a concern of the practice of stacking several meetings. I don't think several is a good term to use. Tonight, we happen to have three because we need the attorney here for something. But we often do two meetings. And part of this is, we have nine members on this board. The Board President cannot be on a standing committee, but can serve as a person, a committee member to make a quorum. Traditionally, there are eight members on the Board of Ed that have shared the work of the standing committees. We now have only six members sharing the responsibilities of those four standing committees. We have three board members serving on three standing committees, plus the Joint Special Building Committee. We have two board members serving on two standing committees, plus the Joint Special Building Committee. We have one board member serving on two standing committees. And we have two members serving on no standing committees. One member refused to serve on two assigned committees, and one member resigned from a committee assignment. As president, I try to attend all of the standing committee meetings and have filled in as an alternate on the finance and operations when needed. Committee members have to be there for the meeting. They're expected to be there for the entire meeting. And I think we have a small number of people serving in a large role. They're working harder and going to more meetings than any board I have ever been on. So if meetings are being stacked, we are, we're in the summer. That happens a lot with HR. But people have families and they have things to do. And I make no apologies for what people consider stacking meetings. If we can do, we can have people out for one night rather than three or four nights or out two nights rather than four nights, I think it's the right thing to do. So that's, I'm not going to change that.
Ms. Owensie?
Thank you. I understand you're not going to change it, but I just will point out that we've had up to three and four meetings on an evening. We shortened our meeting time in order to get out earlier, and we still get out after 10:00, sometimes to 11:00. I've got a graph of all the different meetings, and there has been no improvement in our time. So it's disappointing that they do get stacked because often that bridges the meetings, like the HR is the most notorious. like the HR is the, is the most notorious. Now, I'm not saying it's the chairman's fault, but for being moved and shortened, and we never get the policies that are supposed to be going through there. We just get very short, brief meetings. So, I do attend a lot of meetings. I did withdraw. I did have my reasons, and I gave those reasons. But I still attend, and I still do participate. I was also denied access to a lot of things I volunteered for in terms of negotiations and things. So, this board, the majority of this board has what they want, and I participate as I can.
Okay. And the last issue under the right to know law by Ms. Hohensy?
Thank you. We need to meet the right to know law. It's actually been strengthened as of January 1st because there's a new law that went through. But right now, as I pointed out last time, we had a non-public meeting that had three motions, when there was actually eight that took place. The three motions that were transcribed in the minutes were inaccurate. I brought it to the board's attention. I think something needs to be done to make sure our minutes are accurate, like having the board review them in a timely manner. This was the meeting from June 11th. This is the meeting why we have a policeman at every meeting. I don't know why we're paying for that, but we seem to have, we had two policemen last time, Superintendent Mosley, because you weren't here, I don't know why. And this meeting, we have one. I don't understand why we need security at our meetings, but apparently, we do. But what I'm asking for, state law says if you have a recording of non-public meetings, which in this case of June 11th, we only recorded half of the meeting, and then we turned it off. I objected, but it was turned off. But state law says if you have a recording, you can't discard that recording or reuse it until the minutes are approved by the board. I don't know how many recordings we have of old, non-public meetings. I don't know what accuracy there are. Alls I know is they are not being shown on a regular basis to board members, and we don't approve them like we do public minutes. And it wouldn't matter if they were accurate, but what I'm finding is they're not. So, either this board is concerned about accuracy, or it's not. I trans, as I mentioned last time, I did a draft of that meeting so that it's more accurate, that had all eight motions instead of three. Nobody wanted to deal with it. Maybe this needs to go to policy. Maybe we need to think about it. Maybe we can talk to our attorney with, about it when we go into a non-meeting at the end. But what we're doing is illegal.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I, as you know, I am clerk of the Board of Education, and also when we go into non-public, I'm also clerk. And I would like to remind Ms. Hohensy that only one motion can be on the floor at a time, and that when you have a meeting, and I'm not going to say this happened anywhere, but when you have a meeting, when you have a Board of Education meeting, you can only have one, one motion on the floor at a time unless there's an amendment to that, to that motion, okay? And people can't all be speaking at the same time. And I take offense that any minutes that I take are inaccurate because I take direction from the president, and I ask her when I'm supposed to take the roll call. No one else, but we have people who are yelling. The decorum is terrible. You have a member of this board calling other people corrupt, banging on the table. You want to know why we have police here, okay? Okay, look at the videotape. And I, what I, what I tell the public, look at the videotape at some of the behavior of some of the members of this board, okay? And, and, and that's the reason why, okay? We need better decorum, number one. Number two, you are not the last word on what is accurate and what is not accurate. That's your interpretation.
Please be respectful.
Okay, I apologize. That's all I have to say.
Can I follow up?
Ms., Ms. Timmons?
Yes, first I'd like to say, I appreciate the police officer being here. When they're here, the tone is different, so I really appreciate that. Also, I don't think we're paying for them. That's another thing. I asked Chief Lavoy to be here. I guess other members might have too, but I feel unsafe when somebody's screaming at me, calling me names, and demanding that I don't know what I don't know, and all this other stuff. It terrifies me that a board member would attack me verbally. So, therefore, I feel safer with a police officer here because I don't know the mentality of that person, I don't know that way, to know if he's going to just throw something at me. So, with the police officer here, I feel a lot safer, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hohensy?
Thank you. And I did not mean to insult the clerk. I understand it's complicated. That's why it's an advantage, both whether it's strategic planning or it's non-public, to have an audio recording. It makes minute drafting easier. You weren't the one that put it together. The onus was on Tara to put it together, based on your notes, which were the best you could do while participating in the minute, the meeting, and there was no tape to fall back on. So, she was at a disadvantage. I think we ought to have a policy, or we ought to have an understanding that we tape them to assist the person who's making the minutes, so you don't have to dedicate all of your concentration to the minutes and not participating in it. It's, it's an assist for you. When you take minutes of these meetings, you take the motions, but we do have the backup of the audio to put it and piece it all together. So, I'm just saying, if the board reviewed those minutes, I think they would agree with me that there were missing motions. I, I think you're honest enough to know, if you saw something and you saw it was missing, we would agree upon that it should be fixed. I'm telling you that it's inaccurate, and it needs review. All of our non-public needs review. Some, like the Board of Public Works, for a while, they were approving them without seeing them. One of their members in Nashua said that we'd like to see them. They hand them out, they review them, they're short, they approve them, they collect them. We ought to have a procedure because I think we want to follow the right to know law. I'm assuming everybody does. I'm assuming the best. Thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I do remember, recall that we asked Mr. Bolton about this, and it's not necessary to go back and review non-public and approve non-public minutes. The way we've been doing it is, is just fine. And I remember him answering that question for us. So, I think this is, once again, we don't really need to do it. It's, it's something that, that, that isn't necessary. We've already checked into it, and, and the way we've been doing things is just fine as long as we maintain decorum. And if we lose our, our decorum, it would be nice for some people to apologize to other people who, who they call corrupt or call names, because there are some apologies that are owed here, I think, from some members to others by breaking decorum at, at the HR meeting. But we already asked, we already asked, we already got our attorney to look into that, so I don't think it's necessary.
My comments?
Yes, Mr. Mosher?
I agree with Mr. Guarino, but I would make a suggestion regarding the, the minutes. And we do not need another policy. I would like to suggest that we use a little different venue and make a resolution regarding minutes. That be it resolved, you know, as a kind of a preamble, be it resolved in meeting assembled by the Board of Education, that meetings, minutes acquired by the board shall be in such, such a way, or distributed in such a way, and blah, blah, blah. To make it come out so that everybody would be satisfied. That way, you could very easily hand out, like was said, to different members or to different parties, that this, this is the gist of the meeting that was held on such and such a day. Because, you know, actually, you know, we are quick to send a lot of things to, oh, it's got to go to policy, it's got to go to policy. No, it doesn't. Because we have a lot of policies on the books now. And I don't think that it's a good idea to pick on every nitpity thing that we have a disagreement on, or we argue about, that, oh, it's got to go to policy. No, 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 no. Think about it for a minute and say, well, really, it doesn't. Maybe we could do this a different way. So, if you give it a thought, think it over, and then, and, you know, Board of Education meeting is all assembled, blah, 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 hereby resolve that in the event of a meeting, minutes will be assembled in such and such a way. And let it go with that.
Ms. Hohensy?
Thank you. I would like to re, make a resolution that we have a procedure. The board will hand out non-public minutes at the beginning of a meeting for review and approval, and then collect it.
I guess I'll second, but I, it's not a motion, so I don't.
It's a resolution.
I second the resolution.
Could you, could you please repeat that?
I move to create a resolution that this board will hand out non-public minutes to board members at the beginning of a board meeting, review them, approve them, and collect them. So, we have, that's the motion. And the idea is we have something in place so that we are responsible about our sealed minutes, because at some point, some of them may be called for in a court proceeding. And if we have minutes that are just very random, I don't think it looks responsible as a board.
I'll speak to this. I'm not going to support this. I've talked to Attorney Bolton about this. We have communication from him. This isn't necessary, and I'm not going to support this.
Are we ready for the vote, Madam President? Okay. Mr. Mosher?
I say, yes.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
I have one, two, three, four, five no's and three yeses. The motion fails.
Okay, we're at public comment. Is anybody?
Point of order, Mrs. Oden? In the beginning of the meeting, I asked.
Oh, that's right.
And you said we could bring it up under new business?
Yes, what was that?
The question was for Dr. Mosley. I would like to understand why the board was not invited to the security training that was held on Friday, June 22nd, as previously promised.
It was open. We had advertised it in our weekly news correspondence to all of our faculty, and the board gets a copy of that.
You told us you were going to invite us, and we did not receive an invitation. You said it was going to be held sometime in the afternoon. You didn't give us dates, times, or locations. So, personally, I don't read everything that goes to the staff. I read what comes to the board.
It's also, the board has access to the newsletter that we send out to all of our faculty as well.
I think you were derelict in inviting the board. It's my opinion.
Would you like to have another invitation? So, we're going to have another one. I'd be more than happy to send.
Well, that was my next question. Could you please hold another training for the board? Because no one on the board, when I said that the board was not invited, no one said that either they attended or that I was misstating the fact.
I would be more than happy to work with the Police Department to make sure that there is another training if the board, board would like.
Please, that would be my request.
I would also just say that any training that we have, because we're going to have some subsequent training and follow-up, would, I would welcome the board to participate, to come and observe that in any way. There's, again, there's nothing that we're trying to hide or anything like that. It's all there, and the more that people know about how we're addressing school safety, whether it's the board, or a parent, or anything like that, I think that's fine.
I have a comment on that.
Ms. Timmons?
I would not want to waste the Police Department time, but however, I would like to attend the training when it is scheduled for everyone else.
No problem. And we are going to have another follow-up training because we are going to have new employees coming to the district, so we'll have new teachers. What we're going to try to do in cooperation with the Police Department is schedule that initial safety training with all of our new teachers, so they're aware of, of the process, and they're actually going to be caught up with the rest of the faculty. So, that is forthcoming.
Thank you.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I second the motion that we get an invitation to it, please.
Yes.
I don't read everything either.
Was that a motion you made, Mr. Kaufman?
There was no motion on the floor.
Okay.
I was derelict.
Okay, you want to make sure you get the invitation. I get it. Thank you. Okay, public comments? Is there anybody that would like to speak? No? Okay, board member comments. Ms. Van Twyver? Ms. Hohensy?
Can we go into a non-meeting instead of non-public? Because then we can discuss more than one topic with the attorney.
Did you hear the question, Mr. Clausen?
Going to a non-meeting as opposed to a non-public?
Yes.
Is that the meaning?
That was the question.
Want to have a post or advertise a non-meeting? You could have a non-meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, this board, in its ignorance, voted against recording the Strategic Planning Committee meeting.
Excuse me, excuse me. I've asked people to be respectful. I think on the whole, we've done a better job than we have some nights. So, please, could you refrain from using derogatory words like that?
You should have seen what I drafted originally. This was actually much more respectful.
No, no, excuse me, you're, please.
May I complete? Tonight, this board, in horror to me, and actually, it really saddens me, voted against recording the Strategic Planning Committee meetings. I think this is shortsighted and poor public policy, and flies in the face of transparency, and is disrespectful of the public interest. On a lighter note, I do want to give my kudos to the plant operations people. Mr. Donovan, if you could make a note to Mr. Smith. I was driving past the Amherst Street School the other day, and I noticed the guardrail has been installed, and it's a lot longer than I thought it was going to be. And knowing that it's there because we approved it, I took notice, but other than that, it's just kind of invisible doing what we want it to do. So, would you please thank them for getting that done so soon? That's all I have to say.
From over there, Ms. Timmons?
Yes, on a different note, something positive. Sick of hearing negativity. Okay, Target will give teachers 15% off of anything to stock up their classrooms starting July 15th to the 21st of this month. I think that's a great thing that Target is doing. I asked them, what do the teachers need to do to prove that they're a teacher? And they say, all they have to do is say they're a teacher, and they'll believe them. So, I think that's a good thing, and I like to end with a more positive note, and everything being negative, negative, I can't stand it. I'm a positive person, and that is a positive thing. And I, too, will contribute to supplies out of my own funds for the upcoming school year, as I do have one child entering into kindergarten, and I have another child entering into preschool, and several of them moved up the ladder. But the elementary schools will get some tissues and glue sticks from me. So, I like to end that way.
Thank you. Ms. Porter?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, not to sound redundant, but congratulate Dr. Mosley and Ms. Porter and Stacy on, on the Strategic Plan Initiative, and all the other teachers and administration out there that are going to participate in this. I want to thank you for volunteering your time and your expert. I want to thank you for volunteering your time and your expertise to get this planning, strategic planning process off the ground. I think we have a very good process, a straightforward process, and I'm looking forward to it.
I have nothing. Looking for a motion.
Mr. Mosher?
Oh, Mr. Mosher, do you have something you want to add? Sorry, thank you.
To the general assembly there?
Yes, we're closing out. We're into board member comments at the end.
Yes, I just want to remind everybody what I said before, which did not have to come to a vote, but that if they give careful consideration to the idea of formulating some other way of presenting their thoughts and minutes, and sending them out to whoever, that do like, like I said, and it should be very easy to copy something that we usually do all the time in the House. When I was up there, we have the thing, and we, they, you know, we wanted to put a point across, we'd say, be it resolved in such and such. And we could, we could get a lot accomplished that way, without having to have meetings and motions and all kinds of things where we had to do voting, because you either had to vote something up, or you voted it down. But a resolution, you can just accept it, you can add to it, you can take away from it, you can change it, and you can make it longer or shorter. It all depends on what the situation occurs. But I say, if we take it slowly and think about it carefully, and you can look in the books, and you can see from the, from the House program, or from the Senate program, where they're going to have a resolution to do something, they say, be it resolved in such and such and such and such. And it gets passed. You get a vote on it. People say, yes, I accept it, you know, and they accept their resolution. And that's why you don't have to have something, say, well, it's got to go to policy. Well, we've got enough policies now. Why add to it on all these other things? You know, you want to do it in a different way. So I say, you know, think about it and consider it. Give it your best thoughts. Do a little research, you know, everybody has, including myself now, we have computers. Except for me, I'm in the hospital, so you want to, just use your heads. There's always a better way. Okay, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher, and we hope you're feeling better. I just want to take a minute to thank the police officer. Tonight, we have requested, we have, several of us have family members who have watched the meetings and feel we're in a hostile work environment too often. And that's not a good place to be. And if anybody read the culture and climate survey, it's obvious how we're perceived by the people that we should be leading. And I think we need to work hard to be respectful to each other, and to listen to each other. Whether you agree or not, you can voice that in a respectful manner. And I, although Mr. Mosher is not one for bringing policies through, I am looking at civility policies for the board, right down through the district, that I would like to bring to policy in the near future. So, thank you. I'm looking for a motion. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. It was Ms. Van Twyver, seconded by Mr. Kaufman.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
She's out of the building.
Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons, on the vote to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Nine fifty-six.
Nine fifty-six.